Good evening, everyone. With the posted time having arrived in a quorum of members present, I'll call the Finance Committee for January 9th, 2024 to order. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of our December meetings from 12:05 and 12:19 of 23, copies of which are in the packets. Did anyone note any adjustments to the minutes that they needed to see? If not, I'll take a motion to approve both of them. Motion from Watson, is there a second? Do we have a second on the minutes? Oh, okay, a second by Martins. Any more discussion? If not, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item two is discussion and possible action on the fee schedule for parking permits in Lot 6. Lot 6, there's a map in the packets, looks like it is a lot at Fourth and Washington. And according to our parking lease, it appears the church has access to that for funerals, but the rest of the time, we have a request that, from a local business, for some permit sales for some of those spots. I guess, anything that you wanted to add on that, Marianne, as far as?
So they actually wanted, you know, 20-some permits, but I didn't feel like that would be appropriate for the lot, because, you know, we're always trying to balance the needs of the long-term parkers with the short-term parkers. And when you look at the composite in other parking locations, you know, 10 seems like it would be worth a try. We've told Becker-Hoppe, you know, they could not, that the church does have use during funerals, and that they would have to find other locations to park. They felt that was okay. Right now, they're parked in either, they actually have their employees kind of distributed in various locations downtown. Obviously, they come and go quite a bit as engineers, and there is nothing really close to them that is convenient at this point. You know, with the mall being gone and that whole area kind of under construction, it doesn't get the activity that it used to get. I think also, the on-street parking on Washington Street has expanded the convenience for people. And that is totally free, whereas this lot, you know, people have to register at the pay station, and then they're going to pay if they stay over two hours. So, you know, I guess, we didn't feel like it was our job to say whether we're selling permits in that lot or not, because we have had in the past, you know, it is, like I said, a balancing act between transient customer parking and employee parking, so.
So is it, I mean, or do we assume that they'll have decent communication with the church, so that those vehicles are out of there when they have a need for the lot?
Yes.
I mean, they'll either be not able to park there, or they're going to have to move, right?
Right.
So, okay, Sarah?
Are there going to be designated spots?
No, they would not be designated, so they would be first come, first served, which is how, you know, every other location behaves today. So, you know, we sell permits in pretty much all of the lots, except for the lot by the hotel, you know, Lot 17, I think that is, that we do not sell permits for. That's the only lot, in this lot, those are the only two.
So if there's a spot, they can have it, but if there's not, there's not?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Doug?
Sorry, didn't look at it that closely. Is there a sunset on this, so when things develop down there, when we need to change the plan?
Well, we could, you know, again, we, it's not an agreement, we're just saying first come, first served, 10 stalls, so they would have to, like, run in here on that day and purchase them, and then they expire. You know, like, Becker-Hoppe today pays for a year at a time, so at the end of that year, they would have to renew timely, or we would have to, you know, terminate permit parking within that time. But it's, you know, it's an annual permit if they.
Sure. So we would just, ahead of time, we could.
So we would have options, it's not that we're signing a parking agreement with them.
Right, and we could take action ahead of time to, you know, repeal that, or whatever would need to be done, okay? Is there a motion, then, to approve the sale of the 10 permits? Motion by Denny, is there a second? Second by Watson. Further discuss, go ahead, Sarah.
So is $38 sort of like the going price for permitted parking in the other lot?
So we do charge different prices. This would be the highest rate we have right now, so.
Okay.
Which is what we have been doing with most of the really convenient lots, so that started out that we were just using that rate for the parking ramps, and really, and then we were discounting the lots, but people like the lots better than the ramps, because it's just the convenience of being closer.
Shorter walk.
Right, and not having to go up layers. And so we thought, well, why are we discounting those when that's what people want the most? So we then tried to.
Get some uniformity there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With a motion and a second on the floor, then, to approve the item, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item three is discussion and possible action on a First Amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act sub-recipient agreement with Catholic Charities. You'll recall, a number of months ago, we earmarked some ARPA dollars to spur the startup of the Day Center, and to work with Catholic Charities for some oversight. There were some struggles within the management structure of Open Door with the ongoing operation of the Day Center, so the Day Center was closed until we could get that worked out. Catholic Charities, I believe, has emerged now capable of opening and running the Day Center from their facility. And so what we have, though, is some funds that we had earmarked, ARPA dollars toward that effort, that were not expended, because obviously, that agreement did not go into effect, given the struggles that Open Door had before they were open for very long. So we have a sum of money that we have to make a decision about. It sounds like, according to Tammy's memo, the decision that we can make is either to put that money back in the ARPA pool, or keep it with this resolution that's been drafted to apply towards the revived operation of the Day Center with Catholic Charities in charge of that, and then continue to let it serve part of the solution to our unhoused resident situation. So, I guess, does anyone have questions for Tammy on the content of her memo? She's got some pretty complete info in there, and some dollar figures. Go ahead, Michael.
So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember, because I didn't go back and look at the ARPA documents. The 727 that we gave, allocated to Catholic Charities, that was for 365-day nighttime warming center.
Right.
But that did not provide for day activities, correct? So the 51,000 would allow Catholic Charities to do day services, then, in addition to?
I think the 51,000 was originally intended for two years of oversight, right?
Correct, correct.
Because we were going to have Catholic Charities walk hand-in-hand with Open Door, because they had experience in the management.
Yeah.
Of these federal-funded processes. And so, since we were standing up the Day Center for two years, we had earmarked enough money for two years of the oversight, but now that they're in charge and not doing the oversight, they don't have oversight expense, and the people they were overseeing aren't in the equation anymore. Is that kind of where we left off?
It is very confusing, yes.
It kind of.
Three of us sitting down and hashing things out again. But correct, the initial ARPA request was for 540, $540,000, and that was just to do the 365 warming center. Then, we amended it and asked for additional funds, so that we could do the Day Center, which brought it up to the 727, 308, but then we amended it again for the 51,000-plus dollars for that Catholic Charity's overseeing Open Door. So it's the 51,000, 129 is what's in question, because how the resolution wrote it, we couldn't agree about, is it going back? Does it stay with, you know, does it go back to ARPA? Does it go, stay with?
So does this extra, so this 51,000, this would be extra, so are they going to provide, like, value-added service, extra services, then?
It would just be that they could extend.
Run it longer?
Run it longer, because Open Door utilized about $50,000 of those funds when they ran the shelter. So now, Catholic Charity's taking it over, we don't have as much money in that account that Open Door did, if you follow.
Right. Well, and we're not, I mean, now with the delay in getting open and staying open, we're well under the two years that we wanted in the first place.
Correct.
I mean, we're six-plus months short.
Correct.
So, you know, I guess that was my question, is if we were to keep this 51,000 with the resolution for this cause, would that help us gain ground on getting closer to that two-year mark of actual services?
We even talked about that, if, because of the delay, can, say they have money left over in this fund by the end of December, can we amend the agreement and meet the ARPA requirements?
For the spend-down. That was one concern.
For the spend-down, yes, yes.
But it would have to be approved by December 31.
Of '24.
Of '24, of this year.
Sure, so we'd have to keep an eye on that. I mean, maybe by the end of the summer, see where we're going to end up, and then take action in the fall, so.
Yep, yep. And I don't have this in the memo, but I'm going to propose a Plan 3.
Okay.
Since, I'm going to do a plug for our department again, because we're all federally funded, now we're adding an extra layer of work that we have to do to monitor and not get paid for, and utilize block grant funds to monitor this. So we are saying, maybe you could pay us a little stipend, so we can not have to draw down our block grant funds, because we only have 20% that we can utilize towards admin each year, and this has been a lot of work. And we don't, we're not getting paid out of, I don't want to say this, block grant is paying us. So we're going to hit that 20% mark, because we're doing all this extra work. So that's my concern, that we're going to do that, and then there's no, because we're not on the levy.
Right.
We're 100% funded.
It begs the question, though, so, part of the reason that we wanted Catholic Charity's oversight of Open Door was compliance with federal reporting and federal spending. And so, given the fact that now we have Catholic Charities in charge of that, they really shouldn't need that same help or that oversight, they're already familiar with how to operate within the confines of the restrictions that these dollars come with. And so, you know, we had taken some of the accounting for that in-house, when the oversight wasn't happening, but Open Door was still trying to operate. I know that your department was actually doing the work and the reporting, and the, you know, they were submitting their expenses, and you were cutting the checks to make sure you were paying for stuff that actually took place. Shouldn't that obligation go away now, if those folks are in charge, truly?
Unfortunately, that's not the case, because we're still overseeing the payment requests. We've been, it's not exactly an easy, how do I want to say this? When the payment requests come in, we really have to take a look at it, because there have been expenses that have been asked to be reimbursed, that did not meet the ARPA requirements.
The requirement, okay.
So you have to have someone watch this.
So you still have a measure of oversight necessary?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
More than that we anticipated.
And roughly, what do you estimate in real dollars those hours are going to equate to? I mean, how much of the 51,000?
I'm looking, maybe 8,000 a year.
Okay. So fairly small amount, really.
Really, it is, yes.
Doug, go ahead with the question.
But it's enough to make a difference.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we also have a list of ARPA items that are, that didn't meet the cut, so if, I'm not opposed to putting some of this money into that cause, but should we not put it back into ARPA and then reevaluate it and rate it against what's already requested out there?
You want to rescore it, like?
Well, this piece of it is new, right?
51 isn't. It was evaluated and scored and allocated.
But it wasn't spent.
But it wasn't spent, because they couldn't come up with an agreement.
Right, but now, the piece for CDA or for Economic Development Department is new.
That's.
We're asking for it.
Paying the staff internally for the oversight is new. Yes, the 8,000 part. That really was, because before, they were doing that under their block grant admin allocation, and they were not funded with ARPA.
So, I think there's a small, like, hiccup to this, and that is, you only can pay staff through December 31st of 2024, because it's not considered a contract, so you would only get one year, just so you recognize that, it would just be for the one year. So, you know.
I would, and I guess, when I think of this money, I mean, we've worked hard to try to make sure that we're spending it on things that are of benefit to the public, that are publicly visible. And so, you know, we've struggled with things that appear to be internal or administrative with those particular dollars. I mean, I would like to find, find a way for us to, if we're going to infuse the community development budget with additional admin money, if there's a way that we can find that without using ARPA for it, you know, we've tried to not use ARPA for internal expenses. We've tried to use them for things that help people out in the streets the most. I mean, if we were going to take the 51,000 and divert it to getting us a few extra months of Day Center, that's totally different than paying the oversight piece. I mean, even if it's a small amount, that plays different to the public, I feel like. I don't. What do you guys think? Go ahead, Sarah.
I mean, I guess, I think it's a very forward, like, community-focused, I mean, because they're overseeing a program that's really helping the community. I mean, the administration has to happen, the oversight has to happen, so I guess I don't, I don't see a problem having a certain portion of that go to admin fees. But I guess I'm confused about the 51, so if we keep it with the program, it will be expended as a Day Center, Night Center funding, it will be used by them to continue this program, right?
Correct. Okay. Right, and our goal, when we stood it up for two years to start with, was that during that time, they would figure out alternative fund sources to keep it moving after, whether that was private donations, or grants, or whatever it might be, so that they would be able to, you know, wean off, because the ARPA was a one-time deal. So, you know, at some point, they're going to have to figure out how to continue to keep that thing running without an infusion of public dollars at this level, anyway. If we're only able, though, to reimburse staff costs for one year, then we should look at half that amount, which is 4,000. I mean, I don't think. Liz?
If I may, so what we're looking at is, and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, 8,000 out of the 51, not an additional.
Correct.
Okay? So it's not a, it's not necessarily a, an additional amount, or like, an extra ARPA request, it's out of the 51,000. Could our department, this division, that is not on the levy, that is entirely grant-funded, that needs grant, if they are administering a grant, it's very customary for grants to have an administrative component to them. And, so basically, what we're asking is just a proportional cost for our staff's time in their oversight of this program, out of the already allocated funds.
Well, and there is value to avoid use and spending mistakes with regard to these particular dollars, they come with restrictions. So I do agree with you, and I agree with Alder Watson on that, on that. I mean, there, obviously, it's a big program with big money, but it does need some guardrails, I guess. Carol?
So do we know where Catholic Charity is, where they are with this? I mean, I guess, as I was reading this over, in preparation for the meeting, you know, and I was, yeah, I was kind of trying to, trying to make sense of it, like, how much, yes, yes, we definitely, you know, have wanted, one of the goals is to really help the unhoused situation, but at the same time, as Alder, Denny said, there are, you know, there were other requests, and I, it might be nice to look at what those are, but, or were, but, yeah, it depends, I guess, I would kind of like to find out, if at all possible, where they are in that.
I can answer that. We had a meeting with, with them in office, December 22nd, 20th, somewhere around there, just before the holidays, and they have someone hired, but not doing that service, because we don't have an agreement in place. So they have someone that's kind of working, but kind of not working, and they are asking, let's get this agreement, we need to get the Day Center going, either we hire this person, or we don't hire this person, or he's hired, but he wants, he's like, either you let me do my job, or I can't do this anymore.
Well, that begs the question, where is the agreement, and how long is it going to take to get one, because they've been inoperable for six months, so.
And that's what this, that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
This is, this is the amendment that we want to sign. And we had agreed that as long as, you know, because of the, the agreement that we are giving them the funding, it's just this 51,000, the housekeeping thing, we said that, yes, go forward, get this program running, we need it up and running, we will, we will backdate this plan until that day that we met, that you can start billing us for. So there is somebody in place, they are working on the plan, and I believe we have a meeting coming up shortly, too, that we want to make sure that what they're doing is what we're hoping that they're going to do.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was going to say.
Yeah, let me just update you a little bit, like, it seemed like the question is where are they at currently, as of today?
I was wondering where they're at in terms of being able to, you know, take over then, funding, even finding other funding then, so, is it correct that, so the ARPA funds haven't been used, or they have? I guess that's what I'm wondering as part of it.
They have been used for the warming center. The 365 warming center, they have been utilized for that. Open Door expended about 50,000 when they were open for the Day Center. So that's where we're at right now. We're just trying to get Catholic Charities to get that Day Center up and running, and they have promised us that they have the staff in place. All they need is, let's run.
They've been open for a week now.
They have been.
Yeah, and so, it's just, I just want to make clear, so everybody understands what you're getting for your dollars. I would call it a soft open, they're open two days a week now, with limited hours, as opposed to opening five, they want to be open seven days a week and available, but they also recognize that biting off more than you can chew right out of the chute might lead to their demise, or lack of as much success. So, we are very excited to see that they're open a couple days a week.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're getting moving, so, that's tremendous progress from where we were, based on the work of a lot of people. So I just wanted to make, I didn't want you to think they haven't opened the doors yet, and they're doing that in anticipation of these dollars.
That eases some of my frustration, because I know towards the end of the summer, we were in a total stalemate with trying to figure out who was going to do what and when, and in the meantime, the population that needs the service wasn't getting anything. So, I do feel better about that. You know, I guess, it's just a matter of, we have previously approved this money for this cause, to address the cause of the unhoused population in general terms, either through Day Center or 24/7, 365 warming nights, or cooling nights, or whatever it might be. So I guess that is really, you know, what we need to figure out. I think, on the administrative side, I, I guess, I struggle with taking any of this right now and earmarking it towards administration, because that really was not part of our agenda, nor was it in the packets. I mean, it kind of developed on the fly. You know, I think that, you know, if we wanted to move this agreement forward, I don't know, maybe one of our options is to subtract the $4,000 for the admin, move forward everything but that, hold that, and I think that we're going to have to make a separate decision, right? We don't have an agenda item that says, pay the staff out of ARPA for this. I mean, I feel like that is, there's no way that the public could have understood that this was coming. It's evolved on the floor, so that, I think, is an item for the 23rd. Sarah? Oh, Sarah, and then Michael.
I guess my question is, why can't we just keep the 51,000, and then, like you said earlier, just reevaluate it midsummer? Because if we have to pay administrative costs before the end of the year, we can take that up then, but, I mean, isn't the, I mean, the money can be spent by the warming, or Day Center, right? I mean, they could use this money.
I believe they could use this money, because the amount, I mean, if you look at the dollar amount, they thought it'd take $540,000 to make the warming center 365, but they only have 187,000 to do the Day Center. So to me, it was, I never understood the difference between the numbers.
I think we're all in.
Between Catholic Charities and Open Door, but I didn't make the budget.
Well, I think that, you know, it would be my hope, that with a different outfit running it, that the task of review should be easier. Not that it's going away, but in theory, if you have the right people submitting the right reports, your hours, hours spent overseeing should be, I would think, easier than they were when you began this, down this road with the other vendor. So, you know, that is an option, I guess. If we push the entire 51,129 over to, with the resolution, get the agreement going, if, like Sarah said, six months down the road, we need to figure out before the end of the year, a sum for that oversight, that could be a separate request.
And it's not like we can't keep this in mind when we do have, you know, ARPA fund review agendized.
We could have 2022 surplus, even.
Right, but I mean, because eventually, we're going to go back to looking at what we didn't pass, right?
Right, we're coming off of a 2022 where there was almost no winter. I mean, we, we can look at, in the first quarter, even a small amount of surplus to divert to that, which is not, it's essentially budget savings, not ARPA dollars, but we could find a way to create compensation for community development.
But I guess I'm saying is, like, we're eventually, we had already said that sometime early in the first couple of months, we were going to look back at the list we haven't approved.
Yes, yep.
So I mean, in the back of our minds, we can keep this 51,000 in the back of our minds, and maybe there's a project that, you know, doesn't need to be taken up immediately, and we can revisit it in the summer, so.
Well, are you talking about putting the 51,000 back to the pool, or sending it through?
No, just sending it through, but I mean, we can always have it in the back of our minds.
But you wouldn't pull it back. Once you give it to them, they have to be able to operate with it, right? So, if we send it through, they're getting it. I mean, they're going to, they'll run likely longer than what we would have planned, but we aren't going to repeal it. We would just earmark the rest of whatever's left.
If they can't spend it down?
Right, I do think that you'll have to monitor their spend as we approach 2026, because, you know, you won't be able to spend it after 2026, and I think it is, you know, I wanted to talk to the committee about, should we approve some projects that we could then turn to after 2024, and say, okay, we allocated to these projects, and they had contracts that were open, because, you know, if you allow one of these contracts to go beyond '26 and they don't perform, we're basically going to have to give the ARPA funds back.
Right, and so we're going to have to monitor that spend-down for all of them, and if they're.
And you can't obligate new money in 2026, because you've.
Right.
You've passed the time to obligate, once you get past December 31st of 24.
Of 24, so we will have to take a hard look at everything we've approved.
Yeah.
And if there's stuff that's stagnating or delayed.
Right.
We're going to have to light a fire.
Right, so the conference or session that I attended with the federal government said, the only way you would be able to deal with a contract that maybe had not spend-down is money, is if you had a contractor who is no longer available, so, you know, let's use the affordable housing projects, if you had contracted with a contractor to build that house, and he went into foreclosure, or he was a single proprietor and died, or there was some event like that, you could replace that contract.
With someone else.
With someone else, that would be the only way you would be able to switch projects, you know, past December 31st, 24.
Okay. All right, so that really is the decision we have to make, like, do we want to keep this money for this cause, or shuttle it back to the pool? Michael?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with keeping this money towards a cause, and letting Catholic Charities spend it, I'm pretty certain that it'll get used up by 2026. The only question I have is the administrative fee, and I don't know, maybe what we can do is get a better handle on what the actual expenses are for administering this, and if we could come back at a later date and look at either what actual expenses are, or a better estimation of the time it takes to do the oversight.
Yeah.
And then we can, then we can do an ARPA score for it, or we can find an alternative funding source to reimburse those.
I agree, I think we need to put real hours and real wages to it, so that we have a quantifiable number, rather than just trying to take a shot in the dark, because we may be way off at 8,000, or 4,000, or 5,000, and we may find it's 12, I don't know, but we need to figure out, like, a number that we can back up with data.
And honestly, with us, that's no problem, our time sheets are.
Okay, perfect, yes.
Yeah.
So, let's have, let's put a pin in that for the future, and then just decide, I guess, with that, do we have a motion, then, to move, or do we have more comment? Sarah, or Carol, and then Sarah, sorry.
Thank you. The only other question I had, as I was thinking about this all, was, we have other affordable housing projects, like, even the homes, and is there anything like that, that would be good for this, you know, that this money could be used for? I'm not saying it should be, but I guess I just wanted to, I was trying to think of, you know, the scope, or not, or is, is this the best use for it?
That's a really good question. I would always advocate for more money for our affordable housing units, because we know, once we start building, it's going to cost us a lot of money. But we don't have anything concrete right now. Once we put everything out for bid, we could come back and say, we are so short, we need extra money, but.
Well, and we did just earmark an extra year of increment from the closure of TID6 toward affordable housing, and we earmarked a bunch of those projects that are in the hopper for that money, so I think that we've got a handle on that part. I mean, I really feel like we've got a handle on that. Sarah?
Yeah, and I think the unhoused issue, I mean, this 51,000's a drop in the bucket, but I think keeping it with this, this amendment, like, you know, keeping it with it would but I think keeping it with this amendment, like, you know, keeping it with it would be my motion. I move to keep it.
Well, it makes sense because the day center concept in general was meant to relieve some of the pressure on places like the library and other public buildings, because there's just, there's only so many places to go and there's not a lot to do. And so to create that environment is helpful to the agencies that are, right now, still experiencing pressure from that population. So Sarah, you had a motion to approve to keep the 51,129 with the resolution toward the cause of the day center?
Yep.
Do we have a second for that? Second by Lukens. Further discussion? Doug?
Just to maybe take care of this administration fees piece, could we put into the agreement that we have a, we charge back the organization for fees that we experience? And that way, we don't have to come up with other sourcing, it would be in the agreement, it's a small amount in the $700,000, so it would be?
Given the delays that we've had with everyone, I mean, with all of the legal documentation that it's taken to come to an agreement to this date, it's literally taken these folks, I don't know what, six, eight months to come to a contract that people can live with. I think if we send them back to the drawing board to upend it and add provisions, just the nature of that process is going to set us back and we're not going to have a day center until summer. I mean, I just, I worry about that. Like, they, I feel like they should have been open months ago, and I've had a level of frustration that they've not been open for a while now. So, you know, I just, I worry that if we send this back to the drawing board to add caveats and, you know, there's any sort of time delay or foot dragging, we're right back to no day services. Sarah?
And I guess I would rather, I mean, even though it's only 8,000 or 10,000, whatever it would be, I would want that money to go to the program.
Yeah.
And I think, like you said, if we have surplus that we can maybe tap into for that eight to 10 to offset the administrative costs, I think that would be more beneficial instead of taking it away from the ARPA.
It's our staff that we pay to do similar work anyway, right? So, I mean, that's often where we look when we have shortfalls on things. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to move the 51,129 forward with the resolution to the day center contract, along with the amendment. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item number four is discussion of possible action on primary towing services agreement with Joe Raider Towing LLC and secondary towing services agreement with Lightning Towing. You'll see some documentation in the packets on that. This is something that we've had in service before. We considered this a number of years ago. It looks like we're coming to renewal time here on the tow service agreement. Does anyone have questions on this at all? If not, is there a motion to proceed then with those two vendors? Motion by Denny, second by Martins. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is discussion of possible action on approving accepted offers for the following parcels in the Stewart Avenue, South 72nd Avenue to South 48th Avenue Street Project. It's parcel seven at 7,000 Stewart Avenue, new highway right-of-way fee, permanent limited easement, temporary limited easement. Parcel 16 at 6631 Stewart Avenue, new highway right-of-way fee and a temporary limited easement. Anybody have questions on those items? This is a project, we've been dealing with this stuff for quite some time now, as far as hammering out these things to get this road project going forward. And this is a project that we're doing in collaboration with the OT. If there's not questions, is there a motion to approve those two? Motion by Martins, is there a second? Second by Denny. Go ahead, Sarah.
Will they, I mean, I noticed that one isn't signed by the owner of the, yeah, the owner hasn't signed it yet. I mean, will we be coming back, you think, or?
I don't, I think we give them permission to complete the execution and they get it signed after, right? I mean, we'll bring up Public Works Director, hi.
Yeah, I think verbally with Core, you know, and for some reason, we didn't get the signed one, and hopefully by the time this goes to council
We'll have that in there.
we'll have all the executed documents, yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. Item six is discussion of possible action on accepting the dedication of a portion of 7110 Stewart Avenue and a portion of 6601 Stewart Avenue for public right-of-way, same project. Does anyone have questions on that? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Watson, is there a second? Second by Lukens. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item seven, we have posted for open and closed session. Seven is discussion of possible action on approving a counteroffer for the following parcel in the Stewart Avenue, South 72nd Avenue to South 48th Avenue Project, parcel two, 7500 Stewart Avenue, temporary limited easement and landscaping. Do we have any discussion about this item in open session prior to closed? It appears we do not. So would someone read the closed session motion for item seven? Michael, go ahead, thanks.
I make a motion if we go into closed session pursuant to Sections 19.85, Paragraph